Welcome to Monday, December 16th, 2019. The last council meeting of the year. 2019 has gone by very quickly. First up, are there any disclosures of interest? Seeing none, first, again, we have the result by, or moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Frank, resolved that the council meeting minutes of December 2nd, 2019 be approved. All in favor? And up next, we have Trevor Brazulo, who's going to announce the Santa Claus Parade winners. Welcome, Trevor.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Good evening, members of council, those in attendance, both here and online, for joining us. I'm here tonight, sorry, my name's Trevor, I'm the Recreation Coordinator here at the town, but I'm here tonight on behalf of the, come on in, of the Grimsby Santa Claus Parade Committee to present the awards for our 62nd Annual Parade, which took place on Saturday, December 7th. I'm here with our committee, our Chair, Robin Bradley, her 27th year on the committee, which is a huge accomplishment, so thank you, Robin. I can't say I have quite that many, but I'm working towards it. Ian and Andrea Cotty, Amy Lupton and Andrea Darvich. So that's our committee, we work, starting in September, to get everything planned for the parade. We had another great year, the weather was a lot better this year than last, no rain, and some other parades in the area had some weather difficulties, so we were very happy that we did not experience that. We had an amazing turnout, it was our third year livestreaming the parade. It's been viewed over 6,000 times on platforms, on Facebook and YouTube, which is about double what we had last year, so that presence is certainly growing. We even had viewers commenting in, they were watching from South Carolina, Northern Ireland, and even Grimsby, United Kingdom, so there is a bit of a global reach on our social media. Our commentary on the parade was also great, I wanted to thank Beth Shaw, the Executive Director of the Fort, and Sarah Sweeney, our Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture, for their commentary, they did a great job. So we had 80 entries in the parade this year, and while we're here to recognize the winners, it is an incredible effort to put an entry in, so I just want to thank everybody who took the time to put together a float, coordinate children, floats, drivers, all the things that make the parade great. So I'd like to invite Mayor Jeff Jordan and Parade Chair Robin Bradley, just up to the front here, and we're going to present winners with certificates and just take a few pictures. And Committee Member Amy Lupton's going to announce the first few winners.
Agricultural Society, always a crowd favorite, West Niagara Agricultural Society rolled into Grimsby with well-lit tractors pulling a Christmas tree, an entire fireplace, complete with a mantle and chimney. The West Niagara Agricultural Society hosts the West Niagara Fair each and every year the weekend after Labor Day. Congratulations.
A first-time entry, Miller Waste Systems float was a magical gingerbread house representing Christmas spirit with children onboard and lights to display to represent the season. Congratulations.
And our next winner was our best walking group, which was Expressions Dance Company. And our next winner, for best church or school entry, New Life Community Church. New Life Community Church stayed true to the theme with a float that captured downtown Grimsby, complete with a downtown arch and facades from local businesses like Station One, The Forty, and Amici's Pizza, to name a few. New Life Church is constantly giving back to the community with their For Grimsby campaign with local events and activities. Congratulations. And our final award for the parade, this is our Crowd Pleaser Award, so this is the overall top entry, this year went to Grimsby Secondary School. Congratulations. Grimsby Secondary School's entry was a massive float with a rock trio, drum line, and students representing a variety of student organizations. GSS students and staff collaborated together to make the float. Just as a final note, I would like to say just a few thank yous to the Niagara Regional Police for their assistance with the road closure. It's a large undertaking to close that much of Main Street, so we appreciate their help. Student volunteers, of which we have about 30, 30 adult traffic marshals, members of the parade committee again, sponsors like Rona, who contribute the Santa Claus float, Grimsby Chrysler as a major sponsor, the Merchants of Downtown Grimsby, who sponsor our livestream and our media, and to Town Council and staff for their support. The parade's truly a full community effort, and we look forward to it next year, so thank you. And one final note, some more Christmas stuff we're working on. The Celebration of Lights contest is just wrapping up, we'll be announcing our winners tomorrow on social media and on our website, and that will also include a map of some sights to see with lights in Grimsby, so make sure you look for that on our platforms tomorrow. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Trevor. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Frank, resolved that the Santa Claus Parade winners' presentation by myself and Parade Chair Robin Bradley be received. All in favor? And that's carried. And thank you, everyone, again, another amazing parade, and the 63rd will be even better, Up next, we have Donna Harrington from the Harrington Group, consultant for the JAAC Accessibility Plan, the update for 2019. Welcome, Donna.
I'm here with the Chairperson of the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, Stephen Barker, who's also a citizen of Grimsby, and his guide dog, Austin, to talk a little bit about what's happening with the multi-year accessibility plan. We are in a compliance maintenance phase of the administrative part of the plan, which means that all the compliance requirements have been fulfilled by the Town of Grimsby up until this point. So everything had to be done under all the different standards has been accomplished, and all those tools and resources are available to staff through the Clerks Department, and I've been working with Sarah on making sure that that gets filtered through. Now what we're focusing on is what are we going to focus on until 2025, which is the deadline for accessibility under the AODA. So the committee has decided to do audits of municipally-owned facilities to ensure accessibility is being addressed appropriately in those facilities, and to assist the town in making a plan, should there be deficiencies that exist. So that will involve us going into each facility and measuring the physical plant, as well as looking at lighting and signage and other things, and providing a report back to staff. And then what we've also done, now that we've completed the compliance piece, or the administrative piece of the AODA requirement, we've expanded our mandate to focus on more of community involvement and community outreach. So we have created what's called the, what do we call the award?
Accessibility.
The Accessibility Award, where we're looking at local businesses and local community organizations, and if they are accessible, we have a small checklist that we've created by the committee, if they achieve 80% of that checklist, they're awarded an accessibility award and recognized for their accessibility efforts. We anticipate coming sometime in early New Year with recipients for Grimsby for this year. Stephen's going to talk a little bit about what happened last year.
Hi. By the way, I was at the parade and I didn't recall seeing any of those floats. So we're doing the Accessibility Award, last year we came, I think it was around this time when council had their first council meeting, was it last year around this time? And we did, Canadian Tire got the Accessibility Award, and JJ on the docks, and we've continued that this year. So we've just done two in Grimsby, and like Donna said, we'll be coming back to do those at council and present them with an award. We've done Lincoln Park, The Legion, and we're going to do one more before we actually come to council again to have the awards presented. So it's going over really well, we're getting a lot of people asking us, which is nice, we're going out also and looking for people too, but it's amazing how it's filtered through, and people are actually coming and asking us. And it's difficult for a lot of businesses because they don't receive any government funding to make themselves accessible, so we actually have helpful links that they can go to, to get government loans, federal, provincial, and people aren't aware of that, so it's actually working out well, and they're really walking us in, and so we'll be doing that in the new year, coming to council, and we'll continue doing the accessibility awards too. So we've been busy this year, and I'm glad that, to be part of this, this is my 10th year, I think, on the committee, so I love representing Grimsby on it. Thank you.
I also wanted to say, if council wanted us to come and do an accessibility presentation or do an accessibility training session, we'd be happy to do so, we are prepared, we have one ready, and we have members of the committee that are participating in that, and we'll educate and work with you at any time. So although we are working with the community at large, we are not involving ourselves in private sector compliance, only education and awareness raising, and to be a resource, so that if they need to find what they need to do, we can point them in the right direction.
Excellent.
And that's all.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much for your presentation, Donna, and Stephen, and also Austin, I saw you last week for the flag raising. Yes, any questions, Counselor Vane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, I have a couple of questions for the delegation. First of all, you said 80%, they have to meet the checklist, eight zero?
Yes.
Can you give us an idea, just for the benefit of everybody here and everybody watching, what type of things you are looking for?
Parking, whether there's accessible parking available, whether the entrance is accessible, we look for a basic accessible path of travel, we look at how the staff interact with people with disabilities, what their comfort level is, how welcoming they are, we look at, if they're a restaurant, would they have menus in alternate format, you know, have they trained their staff, do they have inclusive employment practices, do they hire people with disabilities? We haven't had any difficulty finding candidates that meet that 80%, believe it or not, which is really interesting, because it's almost like they're hidden gems in our communities. We don't realize that accessibility is here, because we're so municipally focused on compliance, because that's our job, right, is to ensure you're compliant. Well, you're compliant, so now let's look at what else is out there, and let's recognize those good efforts. So it's been very positive.
I have another question, it's not actually directed at you, I'm going to ask either the Town Manager or Director Sweeney. The, one of the things the delegation said when, just a moment ago, was, private industry may not have money to do it, does the region or the town offer any money to help people make their locations, I'm talking private industry here, make their locations accessible? Is either one of you aware of that?
The town has, I think, a heritage for buildings on Main Street, for the fronts of the buildings, I believe, is it something like that, for the frontage? But, but no, it's provincial and federal that have the grants and loans for accessibility.
Unfortunately, this legislation did not come attached with a budget at the provincial level.
No.
So there are some, there are some grants that are available, both federally and provincially, for accessibility-specific projects, and we would assist applicants in their applications as well, that's one of the things we could do, we provide a lot of support, we provide them some advice on actual accessibility, and things that they need to look at in their applications, so we can assist with those as well, and we have, but unfortunately, this legislation doesn't have funding attached to it.
Thank you both for what you do, and thank you both for coming out this evening, and I do have to admit that Austin, while you were sitting down there, Austin had his legs crossed, looked quite comfortable.
Seeing no further questions, thank you very much for your presentation, Donna, Stephen, and Austin. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Frank, resolved that the delegation of Donna Harrington from the Harrington Group, consultant for the Joint Accessibly, Accessible Advisory Committee, with reference to the 2018 to 2022 Multi-Year Accessibility Plan Annual Update for 2019 be received. All in favor? And that's carried. Now we'd like to welcome Tammy Marudas, Territory Manager of Donor Relations, Canadian Blood Services, and Amy Lupton. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Counselors, for having us tonight. I am the Territory Manager with Canadian Blood Services for all of Niagara, so my responsibility is to make sure that we collect enough blood for the local hospitals. We are a national organization, so somewhat, a lot of the blood that is collected here can very well go into various areas in Canada. So, sorry, there we go. So just really quickly, as far as our mission and our vision, is to help every patient, and to match every need, and to serve every Canadian. Canadian Blood Services, as you can see, we have a new logo, and encompasses our four business kind of lines, which is blood, plasma, stem cells, and organs and tissues. Tonight mostly we'll be talking about the blood, the whole blood that we collect here in Grimsby, but we'll also be talking about stem cells as well. The blood that's collected, actually, we're having a blood donor clinic in Grimsby on Wednesday, so the blood that's collected on Wednesday, within five days, it will be utilized by patients in need. As far as how much blood is required in Grimsby on Wednesday, we're set to collect approximately 72 units, and you can see how quickly those units can be utilized. Heart surgeries can be utilizing up to five units, that takes five donors, and when you scroll down to leukemia, they can be utilizing eight units a week, as far as in their treatments. So the need for blood is constant, and we're always looking to increase our donor base, and to encourage local residents to roll up their sleeves and to donate blood. I'm going to be going kind of quickly for the points there, because I want to let Amy speak and tell you her story, she's a local resident here in Grimsby, but as far as the stats are, is one in two Canadians in their lifetime will either themselves require blood, or know somebody in their family that requires blood. And in reality, it's only one in 60 donors who are eligible who donate, so we want to increase that, that's less 4% of Canadians who actually donate blood. In order to donate blood, you need to be at least 17 years of age, and again, we require blood each and every day for people to roll up their sleeves and to constantly donate blood. I'm going to introduce Amy now, and Nate, Nate is here, and Amy can now introduce her story.
Good evening again, council. As Tammy mentioned, and as already proven, here with the parade committee, I'm a local resident of Grimsby, and we've lived in Grimsby for a number of years now. When my son Nathaniel was born in 2010, he was born at what we thought was a happy, healthy baby boy, the third to our family, and in just a few short weeks, he started to show symptoms that gave us the indication there was something that wasn't quite right. And we took him to the doctor when he developed a rash, and what that rash actually was, was petica. Petica is caused by a low platelet count, and his platelet count was quite low. In fact, on the first night that we arrived at the hospital, it was 15,000, and normal platelet count is 150,000 to 400,000. And so on that very first night in June of 2010, he received his very first platelet transfusion. As the months and weeks and months went by, he was eventually diagnosed with Wisconsin Aldrich Syndrome, a primary immune deficiency disorder that affects the bone marrow, his immune system, and his ability to produce blood cells appropriately. Through the time of diagnosis, he received blood every two to seven days, usually in the form of platelets, but also full blood, whole blood, and immunoglobulins. A really interesting fact about immunoglobulin therapies, when patients need to receive them for their immune system, is that it does take 1,000 donors to collect enough plasma for one immunoglobulin therapy. And so Nate's had over 35 of those immunoglobulin therapies and over 45 blood transfusions, which when you add that up, that's more than the number of people that live in our town of Grimsby that helped to save his life. After his diagnosis, we were informed that he would require a bone marrow transplant, so again, we turned to Canadian Blood Services for their assistance, and the search was started and executed in one of the quickest times in what I've told is the One Match Program's history. So from the date of diagnosis in August, we were told in October 22nd that they had found a donor of cord blood through the international system, and it was coming from Australia. That cord blood came, and he was admitted to Sick Kids on the 22nd of November in 2010, and received his bone marrow transplant on December 2nd, 2010. We've just celebrated his ninth bone marrow transplant anniversary, I think that my husband probably emailed each of you individually to let you know of our celebrations at the Peach King Center, it was a terrible ice storm. Not our best yet, but next year's 10 years, mark it on your calendars, we're going to have a good one. So each year we do do that fundraiser with collecting toys for sick kids, but the other component that we do is we want to keep giving back to the blood system and let people know how important it is, and the impact that you make when you donate blood or become a stem cell donor. And so on Wednesday this week, we'll be hosting our annual Celebrate Nate Clinic at the local blood donor clinic, where we'll be in attendance, chatting with people, sharing our story, sharing cookies and Christmas tidings, just to say thank you for donating blood. And so I do encourage all of you to come out and donate if you're eligible, if you're not eligible, talk to those in your family, and your friends, and your constituents who are eligible, and let them know about the need for Grimsby. The blood certainly comes right back into patients like Nate, it's been quite a number of years now since he's required blood, which is great, he's now pretty healthy, plays hockey for West Niagara, goes to school at Lakeview Public School in grade four, and about 95% of the time, we have a pretty normal life. So we're really grateful, obviously, for the community of Grimsby who has propped us up over the years.
Thank you very much, Amy, for sharing your story, it's always so very important to put a face behind the cause. Really quickly, I just want to let you know about the collections, as far as how we've been doing, as far as collecting the units here in Grimsby. You can see we're about 95% to quota, and that's about approximately 660 units, so that's really good. And as Amy mentioned, she is doing an in-honor clinic this Wednesday, so all the information is there, it's at the Livingston Activity Center, and it does run from 2:00 to 7:00. Holidays can always be a challenging time in order to collect blood, oftentimes people are busy, one thing that perhaps comes off their plate is donating blood, so again, I echo Amy's ask, as far as people to roll up their sleeves. So again, I echo Amy's ask, as far as people to roll up their sleeves and to make that donation for Wednesday. I also wanted to mention, we are having a New Year Clinic, and that's going to be January the 11th, and that's another reason I've come here tonight, and that's hopefully to ask council to help me promote this clinic. This clinic in particular is on a Saturday. Again, we're at the Livingston Activity Centre. This time, we're in the morning, 8:30 to 12:30, and the clinic is only thirty percent booked, and we require sixty-five donors, more donors, to donate blood. This is the third council meeting I've attended. I've attended the Niagara Falls, Welland, and now this one, and I've posed the same request, as far as, help me promote this clinic, perhaps by forwarding you an e-poster that you can promote to all the staff, perhaps, that work in the city, and if there's any other types of, you know, possibilities as far as to promote. We're always looking to increase our donor base, specifically new donors. There's an awful lot of probably residents that have not donated blood and perhaps don't know about, you know, the blood donor clinics that are taking place in Grimsby. So we definitely want to underscore that and bring that to their attention. And certainly, someone can book an appointment either online through our app, or they can dial 1-888-2-DONATE. So I thank you very much for this time, that you've allowed us to come and promote the need for blood and bring awareness, and hopefully encourage some people to donate blood. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Tammy, Amy, and Nathaniel. I just wanted to thank you before I take some questions. Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Jordan, and thank you very much for the presentation. And good to see you, Nate, too. Yeah, yeah, looking very well. Just a couple of things. For a new blood donor, if they go online, about how long does it take, the whole process and to, if you could just enlighten everybody on that, too? That'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. As far as to donate blood, from beginning to end, it takes an hour. I do want to emphasize, you're only donating blood, you're only on the bed for ten minutes. It is indeed a process. So first, I encourage everyone who's interested to donate blood to book an appointment. You don't have to. We do take walk-ins, but I do, again, encourage you to book an appointment. Once you come in, you have to bring some identification with you, government-issued. Also, please, everyone who comes in to donate, you need to have something to eat. So, you know, we, we want people to hydrate themselves as much as possible and have, you know, a good meal. And then the process is that you're answering some questions. All the questions now are answered on a tablet, and then more questions get answered to you with the nurse or our clinic associates. And then afterwards, if you are able and eligible to donate blood, you go on the bed, again, for ten minutes, and then you go to the refreshment area. So again, it takes approximately one hour.
Yes, thank you. And in this process, you're obviously taking a sample of blood, too, to, just to, you know, make sure everything is, you're, you're, can be a donor, then?
Absolutely. We do do our due diligence, so we ask you a lot of questions. We're making sure that the donor themselves is eligible. Once the donation is made, throughout the questions, your finger does get poked, and we do test your hemoglobin or your iron to make sure it's high enough in order for you to safely donate blood. After which, after the donation process, after you donate about one-tenth of your blood volume, which is about five hundred milliliters of blood, we do take some vials, and testing then gets done at our lab.
Councillor Vane?
I want to thank you both for coming out. I do specifically want to say, Nate, it's fantastic to see you the way you are, buddy. Keep it up. I, one thing you talked about, and I don't know if this is directly tied to what you want, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name. Amy, thank you. You mentioned something about Nate getting a bone marrow transplant, and I just want to take this opportunity, not to take away from what you're doing, because I have a question for you as well. When I was much younger, I helped run a campaign for a young man who had leukemia, and he went through a lot of blood, and he desperately needed a bone marrow transplant, and he waited a very long time. And so it ended up causing him some harm because of the weight he had. So I want to take this opportunity to not only mention that we should be really considering donating blood, but also the bone marrow. It's such a hit-and-miss thing. You know, you just got, and I am, you are so blessed, and I am so happy that Nate was able to find one so quickly, because I know this young man waited quite some time. Having said that, I do have some questions about blood donation, though. I mean, I've, I personally have never donated blood, because I've always told, for various reasons, I couldn't. I'm just going to ask some very generic questions. If people have, say, diabetes, or, I'm trying to think of non, that type of thing, or I've heard that if you've had jaundice at any time in your life, you can't donate, that kind of thing. Could you kind of just explain that a bit? Because, because of these things, I've never donated, and I really would like to if I'm eligible to.
Certainly. As far as eligibility, it is on our website, blood.ca, and you can review, and there's a slew of medications that you can review to make sure that you are eligible to donate. Oftentimes, people self-defer, and we have changed. So our basic eligibility criteria has changed over the years. So as far as diabetes, again, I would recommend everyone to call 1-888-2-DONATE. There's an R N there, and she can answer any of your questions. But generally speaking, for diabetes, as long as you're not insulin-dependent, you're okay to donate blood. And again, there might be some other underlying health issues, so again, I do recommend for you to confirm as far as the eligibility. But a lot of the questions are answered online, and then you can always call 1-888-2-DONATE. And I'm sure Amy probably would want to add a little bit more with stem cells.
So I just wanted to add that I, too, am deferred from giving blood, and for that reason, decided to give back in other ways, by sharing our story and promoting what Canadian Blood Services does. At any time in Canada, over a thousand patients are waiting for a stem cell transplant, and Canadian Blood Services and what they call the One Match Network works on that. Nine years ago, in October, we hosted a blood donor drive, but we also hosted a stem cell drive or a One Match swabbing event at the same time. And so those events happen throughout Ontario at any given time, looking to grow the base. The, the age limit for the stem cell donations is seventeen to thirty-five, and that's because we're looking for donors in, in their prime, when, as my mom says, their cells are best to give to donors. And so there is a very specific criteria. Once you go on to the, the One Match Registry, you will remain on there until, I believe, sixty, the last time that I, that I checked. So these, these swab clinics are happening anytime. You can also go on to Canadian Blood Services' website, though, and order a swab kit and swab yourself at home and send it back. Just an interesting tidbit is, yes, people are always looking, and some wait much longer than Nate. We were very blessed. Last week, my husband read on social media of a family in the London area, whose son was also diagnosed with Wiskott Aldrich Syndrome and is looking for a donor, and they were running a swab clinic in Mount Elgin. And so Nate's sporting a new shirt and a new tuque that he got at that swab clinic. Our family took a drive-out to introduce ourselves to the family, who, son also has the rare disease that Nate has, but to support at that swab clinic. So these pop-up clinics certainly happen all over the place. We are working on targeting the young, especially at colleges and universities, and Canadian Blood Services is doing a great job. The other way that we're connecting, collecting stem cells now is through Canada's public cord blood bank. And so when Nate had his transplant, there was not a publicly funded cord blood bank, and that has since changed, and our family helped along the way to, to promote that and to raise the funds that were necessary to get that off the ground. There are five collection sites across Canada now collecting cord. Nate's transplant indeed was from cord blood that came from Australia.
Excellent. One last question for Tammy. Do you, do you advertise on our town website, and do you advertise in the local newspapers? Because I don't believe they charge you for this.
Actually, they do. So we do definitely go to the local papers. In fact, this clinic and January's clinic will be posted. We've worked closely with the fire services and departments, and I believe the city has done our e-blast in the past as well. We're specifically looking for support in the January clinic because we're so, we're not well booked, so we definitely need some additional promotion.
Great, thanks. Councillor Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amy, that's an unbelievable story. And I just got to ask a question of Nate. What position do you play in hockey?
Gregor.
How well are you doing? Getting lots of goals?
Yeah.
That's good. That's good. That's good. Anyways, thank you very much for sharing your story. It's actually very enlightening, and I don't think that we really appreciate how much our, our blood is worth in terms of lives and so on and so forth, until we hear someone like yourself come and tell us, and someone like Tammy out there knocking on doors and, and shouting the good story. Tammy, a question for you. Do you come to different sites? Do you only come to the town and take blood at the Livingston Centre, or do you go to various other sites in town, like the Fire Hall, Town Hall, places like that? I mean, because I'm sure that you would entice a few people to come out even more for you.
Certainly. A lot of the sites that we can come to, it depends on our site inspections and the load and unloads. Typically, we go to the Activity Centre. When they cannot host us, then we have, in the past, gone to Blessed Trinity. But primarily, we do the community blood mobiles, as we call them. They're pop-ups. So we have two. As you could saw on the screen, we have a weekday, which is a Wednesday, and then a Saturday, and it alternates from month, from month to month.
Thank you. Keep doing it.
Great. Thanks again for your presentation, Tammy, Amy, and, and also Nate. Really amazing story. Moved by Councillor Vardy, second by Councillor Frick, resolve that Tammy Marudas, Territory Manager, Donor Relations, Canadian Blood Services, and Amy Lepton, with reference to the Grimsby Mobile Clinic Blood Centers be received. All in favor? And that's carried. Up next, Councillor Furtick is going to announce, talk a little bit about Matt Robinson and Rob Salowicz, Program Manager, Transit Service, Go Implementation, Niagara Region. Welcome, Councillor Furtick.
Good evening, council and staff, ladies and gentlemen. I guess my first request would be is that I've been asked to ask for your kind consideration to go beyond the ten minutes. There's a strong possibility that may happen on, on the presentation, so.
Yes, we're aware of that, and we look forward to that.
Okay. Thank you. I have the pleasure to introduce to you, from the Niagara Region Director, Matt Robinson, who is the Go Implementation person, and Rob Sluwicz, who is the Program Manager for Transit Services for the Niagara Region. The team handles both regional transit, conventional and specialized, and the implementation of the Go service. They are here this evening to speak to you of on-demand transit into West Niagara and the opportunity for local transit connectivity. I hope you've taken the opportunity to review the presentation that was presented to you earlier. Without further ado, Mr. Robinson and Mr. Sluwicz.
Hey, there we go. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. We appreciate the invitation and appreciate the kind introduction there from Councillor Furtick as well. We certainly appreciate both Mayor Jordan and Councillor Furtick's support at Regional Council when recent transit investments were passed in the regional budget. So Mr. Salowicz manages our transit services at Niagara Region. He's going to do the bulk of the presentation. I'll come back for some of the Q and A at the end, but Mr. Salowicz, you're welcome to refer to him as Rob, I always do. Rob will be delivering the presentation, and he really knows all of the ins and outs about delivering transit. He manages both our NST and NRT services and is a big proponent of on-demand. We are really excited about the path forward and the path ahead for transit in Niagara. There have been historic investments over the last few years, and this is the latest next generation of transit. You're going to hear tonight what on-demand transit is, how it can help support West Niagara, and how the region plans to rule it out in the, in the year ahead. So a quick agenda. We'll go through a bit of background, and then we'll get into some, what is transit? Why transit? Fixed route, so fixed route is basically the larger buses that go undefined routes versus on-demand, which is point-to-point service. Why via? So there's a particular agency and company that we are going with to deploy NRT West. The local impacts or local opportunities that exist for on-demand transit. Rob's going to talk a bit about IMT West and the expansion out here into West Niagara, and then, of course, some next steps. So in terms of background, we know through recent council meetings that the town of Grimsby's strategic priorities, council strategic priorities, include exploration of a municipal partnership with a car-sharing service. I think this is more ride-sharing in terms of what on-demand delivers, which you'll hear from Mr. Salowicz as to the nuance and the difference between those. What I can say is that NRT West's expansion was included in the Intermunicipal Transit Working Group Service Enhancement Implementation Strategy back in 2018. So there's a multi-year, multi-year, sorry, multi-year Niagara Region Transit Expansion Plan that we've been aggressively implementing over the last two budget cycles, and it was identified in that implementation strategy that a pilot project for Niagara West would be implemented over the multi-year strategy, as well as connections in with your neighbors in Pelham and Lincoln. Just recently, Mr. Salowicz and I delivered a very similar presentation to, we've been now to Port Colborne, to Pelham, to Lincoln, this will be Grimsby, and we have something lined up for West Lincoln as well. And we're pleased to, pleased to say that in Pelham and Lincoln, not two weeks ago, their councils approved the regional on-demand pilot for Q1 in 2020. So Mr. Salowicz will talk a little bit more about that, but at a high level, we're very excited about the partnership, the pooled resources that can exist with our municipal peers and with your municipal neighbors. And then lastly, this will come up again in early 2020, not necessarily the topic of discussion this evening, but also worthwhile mentioning that the Niagara Transit Governance Study is pending completion in Q2, early Q2 2020, and that is looking at aligning some of these contract durations that you'll hear about tonight to support some potential transitions as we look at a unified transit system for all of Niagara. So with that said, I will turn things over to Mr. Salowicz, who will walk through the rest of the presentation. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much, Matt, and thank you, Councillor Furtick, and thank you, council, for having us here this evening. So I guess the first point is, is why transit? And transit's important for community empowerment. So there's a number of elements that go into that that we want to highlight. It provides your residents with the freedom to travel, whether they have access to a vehicle or not. It provides them equitable access, regardless of their socio-demographic, they'll have access to the service. It's inclusive. It provides connectivity throughout the entire municipality, whether that's healthcare, employment, education services, local businesses, the list tends to go on. But again, it also supports some community involvement. Discussing just a little bit about the differences. So the term TMC, TNC stands for Transportation Network Company, and that's what you'd typically consider your Uber or your Lyft. So some of you may be familiar with a pilot that Innisfil has done with, with Uber. And transportation as a service is a bit of a different take on that, and it's something that's offered by the company that we've decided to go through is Via Mobility. So this slide really just serves as a bit of a comparator between those two different types of service. So on the left-hand side, when you have a company like Uber or Lyft, you're paying a per-trip subsidy. So you're basically subsidizing an Uber ride. But that's also subject to demand and distance pricing, so anybody that's ever taken an Uber before knows that depending on how busy it is, you may face surge pricing. So there's inconsistency about how much your trip is going to cost, and also, the further you go, the more that your trip costs as well. But also, the more people use your service, the more it's going to cost the town. It also has the potential for the funding to run out mid-year. And again, anyone that's familiar with the pilot of Uber and Innisfil knows that they were over-budget in year one, they were over-budget in year two, and that's despite asking for additional monies mid-year. And, you know, 2019, we haven't received the final numbers yet, but I think it's going to be close as well. So the difference with a, via So the difference with Via Mobility or the the Task Service is that they operate on a per-hour model. So much in the same way that we operate our existing fixed route services, where we're putting vehicles on the road for a certain period of time. We know exactly what the fares are going or what the the cost is going to be. It's it provides a measure of containment that we wouldn't otherwise have. But also, when you increase the ridership, you actually drive down the per-trip cost because you're aimed at sharing rides. And that's something that our service is aiming to do, whereas the Uber model doesn't. The Uber model is very much a, we'll take you wherever you want to go and you don't have to share a ride. Whereas this one is much more aligned to transit, where it's a shared ride service. We want to make sure people get to where they want to go, but not at the expense of just shelling out more dollars to make that happen. And we also provide guaranteed service hours by having an operating rate as well. Some other differences is with Uber, you don't have trained drivers. You definitely, they submit a form online and they get approved. And then they start driving for Uber, whereas with with our service, they would have professionally trained drivers. Also, insurance is still somewhat unregulated. While there is a, some insurance providers do provide transportation network company insurance. It's not regulated, whereas because with our contract, we would require that a specific type of insurance be required. Same thing with vehicle maintenance. Your Uber driver can clean or not clean their their vehicle as much as they do or do not want to do. And we'll be mandating that type of thing through our agreement so we can ensure that vehicles are clean as well. So this slide is really just aimed at trying to highlight some of the differences again. And I apologize, some of the text is a little bit small there. But basically, the green lines are the TNCs or the Uber models. And the orange lines are what the region is promoting. So in the first, the first graphic there is something I mentioned already. The more trips that you deliver, the more that your costs go up to the town. And it's really exponential. The more trips you do, the cost will continue to go up. Whereas with the fixed model that we're promoting, the more trips that you have, it's all on a finite line because we've already defined the number of service hours that we're going to deliver in the year based on the budget that we have. The second graphic deals with distance. So with an Uber trip, again, something I mentioned already is the further you go for your trip, the more it's going to cost. The greater the subsidy is is going to be to to the town. And again, that's not the case. It's static with the Via Mobility and the service that we're promoting. And the third one is something, again, it's really relating to sharing of rides. With the Uber model, they're not looking at sharing rides. And even if they did, they're paying a per-trip subsidy. So it doesn't help drive down the cost per trip. Whereas with our model, we're focused on trying to have rides that are being shared. And in fact, that's one of the things that Via Software specializes in, is ride-sharing. It helps bring down our cost per trip. So some of the benefits of of providing this in this slide, anything in black is really something that both the Uber and the Via-type models can provide. So it's, you know, maximizes your coverage area. We want to make sure we get out to all those different residents, no matter where they live. And I think we all know that's something that a fixed route service really struggles to do. So, you know, that's why we're looking at on-demand. There's significant ridership potential increases because we're getting to all of those different areas and people can travel where they need to go as opposed to where we've predefined a bus route. These services are deployed worldwide. So while they're relatively new to Canada, they're not new worldwide. And there's deployments, there's literally thousands of on-demand deployments around the world. And that there's different operating of models that are out there, and they're all quite flexible. So some of them go door to door, some of them are curb to curb, and some of them go corner to corner, where they actually have the expectation that the rider will, you know, travel, sorry, one hundred to two hundred meters in order to meet that trip. And that helps cut out a lot of the sort of the detours through the local streets that aren't really necessary in order to make sure that that trip. What's different is what's in green below. So with the Via Mobility service that we're recommending, it eliminates the need for a separate specialized transit service. So with Uber, there are no accessible vehicles. With our service, vehicles are accessible. So regardless of your your needs, we are able to provide that same service for you. You don't necessarily need to rely on a service like NST that requires you to go and register and go to your doctor in order to get forms filled out and then sending them in to us. It would just be one existing service that's available for any rider. Data ownership. Another thing that that they struggle with on the Uber and Lyft side is who owns that data and how do you get it? Via is very proud to share that data and to make sure that that ownership is is shared with the municipality right from the start. It's one of the things that sets them apart, is their willingness to work with the municipalities and was was a big piece for us in wanting to to utilize them. And the last one is cost containment. I did touch on it, but the the per-trip subsidy that you have, the busier your service gets, the more it's going to cost you in the long run. Whereas you have a fixed operating rate, you set the number of hours that you want to deliver, and you know exactly where you're going to come in for the year. But for the riders, so this is very similarly laid out. Anything in black is something that's offered really over both types of services. And then the green is something that's that's specific to Via Mobility and Task Services. So a unique user profile, improved connectivity, more direct routing, certainly on-demand, but will get you where you are and take you to where you need to be. And they both have access to real-time vehicle vehicle information. So if you're familiar at all with our specialized transit service, there's a half-hour window where the vehicle can arrive. And, you know, it may arrive within five minutes and it may arrive within twenty-five minutes. And that causes a lot of challenges for people. These services don't have that same barrier because the the vehicles are all equipped with real-time information. Again, the vehicles are accessible. This is key for ensuring that you're not forcing people who require additional levels of accommodation to know about a separate service that they have to then pay for. There's multiple booking options. So of course, it's all done through an app, just like it is with Uber. But this company also maintains a phone reservation system so that you can call in if anybody who doesn't have access to a smartphone or is maybe just more comfortable in speaking to somebody for the first few times. They provide that service so that that can be done. Just in comparison with what's happening in Innisfree, the town actually has to have staff that's available to run a reservation system and a registration system because Uber doesn't provide that, yet ours does with Via. So again, another reason that we were happy with that. And then consistent pricing. So we're looking at a fixed fare system. It's basically three dollars for a local trip, so within your municipality, and then six dollars to take you outside of the municipality to one of your neighbors. Again, with with Uber, that's not the case. The the distance that you travel is dependent on, or your your cost is depend dependent on the distance that you travel and also the time of day and how busy the service is, also affects the cost of your trip. So there's a lot of inconsistency there that we feel we can we can do better and avoid. So why Via? How do we end up focusing on this company? So if we just look at the the top right corner, the micro-transit platform, the SaaS service, there are a number of companies out in this space. And this is really where Uber would, you know, more or less fall in. It's they provide an on-demand transit technology platform. They'll route your vehicles and, you know, they'll handle all of the backend. But there are virtually zero other companies that do all of the other items combined. And where we were especially excited to see is in the Task Service. And this is where they actually provide the vehicles, the drivers as well, the reservation system, ownership of the data. These were all key, important elements to us. And then they do some other, you know, new mobility solutions. Just wanted to quickly highlight is in New York City, they Via actually runs all of the Department of Education's school buses. And they do that in real time. And they've saved roughly fifteen percent off the the number of buses that are required just by being more efficient with the routing. So there's a lot of different types of of things that they can do in order to make that happen. Via is a global company, so they're based out of North America, they're out of the United States. They have deployments everywhere, though, from the the UK to Asia, to Australia, Europe. And of course, they have they have plenty of deployments in in Chicago, New York, Arlington, Texas, Lone Lone Tree, Colorado. But they've also got a couple of pilots in Canada as well. One that's recent in Sault Ste. Marie and one in Quebec as well, where they they're aimed at focusing riders to other modes of transit. So for the local on-demand transit, one of the things that we were looking at is when the region started on this this journey, we were originally looking for providing connections to West Niagara from our existing transit service. So which is essentially St. Catherine's Well and in Port Colborne are sort of the the closest to the area. And when we looked at the feasibility study, we found out that essentially we can run a service together that's much more effective than we would be able to run a service separately and have multiple different services in each municipality. So, you know, if we took you from St. Catherine's or even from Pelham into Lincoln, that would be on one service. But if both Lincoln and Pelham have separate services, you might actually need to get on three different services in order to make your one trip. You know, your trip from your home to to the bus and then the region service to the next municipality, and then you're on the local service from there. Yet, working together, we can eliminate all of that confusion and the delay that is inevitably caused by transferring and work together. So with that in mind, as Matt mentioned, we started going to some of the other communities. And we started discussing the opportunities for working together. And that's really where this integrated solution came forward. As he also mentioned, the council approved in Pelham to cease operations of Pelham Transit and to join with the region in this joint program. And the same thing with with Lincoln as well. They've got a relatively new U-Link program, but the ridership was extremely low. And so they they realize that it's they're not getting to all of their their community. And they really only add one bus in that municipality that's providing that service. And then Grimsby, of course, is is where we're here tonight. So the map that's up there really just highlights the different types of services that we'll be be looking to offer. If the region was to do it on its own, we only have the jurisdictional authority to deliver trips from one municipality to another. So when we received the triple majority in 2017, it only gave us the authority to do those intermunicipal trips. So we need local partners in order to ensure that we can also deliver those local trips, those trips within your own city. And that's one of the benefits that really draw or drew Pelham and Lincoln to this program is recognizing that if the region does it on its own, they still need a local transit solution in their community. And they still need to do better than they were currently doing. Yet, if we work together, we can take you from anywhere in your municipality to anywhere in either your municipality or to a neighboring municipality. And I will touch on that just a little bit more in a moment. So the IMT West expansion, you know, what we're looking is a zone that is going to cover the entirety of the five municipalities that, for the sake of our feasibility study, we considered West Niagara. So Pelham, Waynefleet, West Lincoln, Grimsby, and Lincoln. We're aimed at providing connectivity. And, you know, it's only three bullet points there, but really the connectivity is to anywhere. And I think that's what's most key about this. A seamless rider experience. I did mention, if we only have one system, it's very easy for people to know what system they need to to use as opposed to having a different one in each municipality. The concept was approved by Regional Council. It was pending budget approval December 12th, but we're happy to announce that that budget was passed. So we appreciate the support that we received from from the mayor and from our regional councillor and getting those items funded. It's also scalable. So depending on which municipalities want to be involved, we can help integrate to a different level of service for those municipalities. So Pelham's involved, as I mentioned, Lincoln is as well. That means that we can provide both intermunicipal and intra-municipal services. We're hoping that we can provide the same level of service to the Grimsby residents as well. It's a little bit different for the residents of West Lincoln and Waynefleet, where at this time, it wasn't feasible for them to join in as a partner, a contributing partner to the program. And what that means for them is that those residents can only travel outside of their municipality. So it can't help them get to to church. Or if anybody's familiar with Marshfield Chocolates in Waynefleet, for those residents, they can't help you get there as well, right? So it's a personal favorite of mine, so my apologies. So we're looking at a Q1 2020 deployment. That's the target for it. We think that we have a really great system that's that's on the horizon here. The purpose of this one-year pilot that we're looking at, and we are saying one year with an option to extend up to a a second set of twelve months, it's to really test Via. So I mentioned earlier that there are a number of different software providers out there that can do this. But from a pilot perspective, we really wanted to make sure that we weren't overstepping and we didn't put forth a capital contribution on top of the operating dollars that are required to do it. And that's why the Task Service was so valuable to us is that this company is essentially bearing the responsibility for providing those vehicles. And at the end of the one year, if the region or the partners or whoever was involved wanted to purchase its own set of vehicles, we can do that. If we wanted to continue and maintain through these, you know, leased vehicles through this company, that provides the option as well.